Good evening.
Don't tempt me, Dave.
I'm going to call the Board of Selectmen's meeting for June 23, 2023 to order. It's 5:17. I'll take a motion to go into executive session and note that we will return to open session no later than 6:00 P.M.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we move to executive session pursuant to general law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel and to conduct contract negotiations with non-union personnel.
Moved and seconded to go into executive session. Roll call vote, Larry?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
And I am an aye. Thank you. Good evening. I'm going to call the Board of Selectmen's meeting for January 23, 2023 back to order. We started tonight's meeting at 5:15 in executive session. We were discussed to conduct a strategy session in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel. No decisions were made. Would you please join me for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under a indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Thank you. Public comment and announcement, I'm going to start with the town administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening to you, to the members of the board, those assembled and those at home. I learned a long time ago that the best speakers were those that were good people, speaking well. And that's a thing I learned in college and it's something that I always strive to do. I did not meet that standard last week at the Affordable Housing Trust meeting, and for that I apologize. I apologize to the members of the trust, to the participants that were present, to the board, and certainly to the residents and the citizens of our town. I regret the manner in which I've comported myself and the manner in which the meeting was led. So for that, I apologize and I offer to you my solemn promise to do the thing that I've always strived to do, and that is to simply do better. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Anyone else for public comment and announcement?
Evening, Mr. Chairman, Richard Waystack-Harwich, members of the board, Mr. Powers. I came before you a couple of weeks ago talking about the Harwich Housing Huddle, done under the Housing and Protect Cape Cod slash tag, "Save the Locals." We have that event, we have brochures on your table in front of you. We're inviting the community. It is on February 1 at 204 Sisson at 8:30 a.m. We have a couple of local speakers who'll be speaking that night. Our own town administrator, Mr. Powers, and our fire chief, David LeBlanc, will be speaking. It will be emceed by our friend Matt Pitta from the Davenport Companies. So I would invite, cordially invite, the board to attend and anyone in the community that cares about saving the locals in housing in this community to please join us to learn how to advocate, advocate for housing in the town of Harwich. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Waystack. Anyone else for public comment and announcement? Don?
Mr. Chairman, based on Richard's invitation, could we make sure that that's posted for the Board of Selectmen just in case three or more of us show up and make some comments?
I'll set you. Can you post that for the board?
Joint meeting? So that we're, if we, if three or more of us show up and we actually sound like we're saying something that's formulating a policy of any sort, I want it to be posted. So it would have to be posted as a meeting of the board if that's your intent? Okay. Yeah, we can work on that.
Thank you, Joe. Anyone else for public comment and announcement? Chief? Want to make some introductions?
Sure. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dave Gilmour, chief of police. Come on up, Amber. So, just as a lead-in, you've got a couple memos in your packet. One of those individuals was standing up and going to be appointed tonight, hopefully by you, but he has made the decision to withdraw from the process. So Matt Cook will not be getting appointed tonight, okay? But on to the good news. This is, this is Amber Grass standing to my right. Amber is a Harwich kid, 2017 Montmore High School, went off to college, criminal justice degree from Bridgewater State, and she's been pursuing her master's degree at Loyola. She's got about four classes left. And she comes with, with some level of experience, too. She was one of those CSOs that walks Main Street in the summertime. She did that for about a year, summer into the, into the fall. So we're very excited to have her standing up and ready to start the academy on February 6 and bringing her onboard. She'll be coming out of the academy right as the summer gets into the high season, about early July.
Comments? Don?
Amber knows this is coming. I've known Amber since she was about this big. She is a person of really high character, extraordinary vision about stuff, even when she was a kid, about what's right, what's wrong. You couldn't have done better. And it's wonderful to have her in the community.
Thank you.
Larry?
They're welcome. I'm pleased that Chief is going to be right into the busy time of the year. No chance to get acclimated, right?
Mary?
Welcome.
Welcome, Amber. Always glad to see another woman on the force. So welcome aboard and good luck at the academy.
Thank you.
Welcome. It's great to see a Harwich High School student becoming a police officer in town. Welcome.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Can I get a motion on the consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman, move. Oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
We misreading again?
No, we're going to go to consent agenda, then I'm going to go back to public comments.
I got to get you a clear ruler so that we can give up and down easily. I move, Mr. Chairman, that we vote to accept the committee resignation from Joseph McParland Jr. from the Harwich Housing Committee and vote to approve the police, the chief of police appointment, recommendation of two student officers. And as to the McParland one, I would hope that we send him a letter of thanks for his service also.
Thank you. And we're going to go to the agenda change, but it's one student.
Okay.
Mary? No, not yet.
Second.
Any, okay, moved to the second. And any further conversation, questions? Done? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Welcome aboard officially. Now we're going to bump back up to public comments and announcements. Mary?
I'm going to do my weekly reading of our committee vacancies, agricultural commission, capital outlay, community center facilities, conservation, forest, cultural council, energy and climate action, historic district, housing, planning board, real estate and open space, treasure chest, voter information, youth services, zoning board of appeals, and any other committee you might be interested in, just put your name in the, in the hat.
That is an important note. Just because there's no vacant, vacancies does not mean you can't apply. It'd be nice to have extra applications in the file for when vacancies happen. Thank you, Mary. All right, new business.
Michael, before we go there, I see Cindy from the Chamber of Commerce is here. I don't want to pick on her, but we did get a, I think, an email or in a packet about, you're working again on the backpack for the J1? That's a great service. You just want to stand up and give people a bow for that because we all worry about some of the summer bicycles in the dark and.
Kind of was hiding back there tonight, Larry. So once again, we're partnering with the J1 group, Pastor Matt and his wife Catherine. And so today we sent out to all of our members and to the town officials, anyone that would like to help put information in there, they can drop it off to me at the office and we'll make sure that they get into the packets. It's to acclimate the students that come to help work in the restaurants, the hotels, and any of our businesses to serve all of us while we enjoy all that Harwich and the Cape has.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. Thank you, Larry. Okay, new business. Discussing, discussion on a resident request pertaining to town-owned property located at 86 Queen Anne Road. I'm not sure how many board members got the email, but I know the town administrator did and I did. Jeffrey Locantori?
It's in the packet.
Okay. Jeffrey Locantori, who is a resident, a longtime resident of the town of Harwich, has been trying to build some adult with disability housing. He's formed a 501(c)(3). He has presented to the Housing Trust, I believe. Don, correct? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah. I mean, Joe could speak more to this, but I mean, it really got to the point where they didn't have any kind of commitments for land, they didn't have any money raised for anything else. We started trying to find a split, a space on Oak Street for him, but CPC, quite rightly, didn't want to give money if the project wasn't a project and didn't have land or anything else associated with it. So I mean, this is one of those things where you wish you could help, but you can't figure out how you can. So if there's another way of doing, getting these folks into a congregant housing, it'd be something that I know that most of the trust members would absolutely be in favor of.
Thank you. So the request became, it turned into an email requesting a piece of land that he had found on 86 Queen Anne Road. It was spelled out by the town administrator, and Joe, I'm going to let you go through your reply email to Jeffrey, if you would.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I can certainly go through that because I remember the content, but also the conversations. You know, we on the trust know that Mr. Locantori has been working on this project for over two years now. We know it's a labor of love for him and to get this done. So as the trust has been evaluating properties, Mr. Locantori has asked, and for any property that the town has, either through the trust or through the Board of Selectmen, that is considered to be surplus, as you board members know, must be disposed of in accordance with Chapter 30b. And the typical way that we dispose of surplus properties is to establish a request for proposals for certain standards and criteria. So as I've explained to Mr. Locantori, that if the trust has the property, the trust doesn't consider it surplus, the trust is working on it for land purposes, excuse me, for housing purposes. I don't know the specifics with regard to the parcel that he mentions on Queen Anne other than if it is town property, it has to first be declared surplus by the board. And then I would recommend if the board is declaring property surplus, then you decide whether it doesn't have a use through the trust or any other town agency. And if it doesn't, that, how you want that land to be used, and that would be through the RFP process. So there's never going to be an opportunity for the, for the Board of Selectmen, the trust, or me as administrator to say, yep, we'll give you that parcel because I'm obligated to follow the procurement laws.
Thank you, Joe. Open it up for comments and questions from the board or suggestions. Mary?
You know, I certainly feel for Jeff. I think he's done a good job organizing the 501(c)(3), but I think the piece that's missing, and I know the trust has advised him, and I think CPC has advised him as well, that he needs to do some fundraising to get some money to be, to be in the game. And I, I don't know if that has happened. The fact that he's asking for land would tell me maybe he hasn't.
Thank you, Mary. Don?
That's accurate. Mary was at all those meetings, really trying hard to find a way to do this. It's not like we're trying to find measures to block them. This would be a terrific thing. He's, he's in Harwich. It's a wonderful idea. How to get from here to actually putting somebody in a house with a roof over their head is really the problem. And Joe's right. I mean, there's no mechanism right now for this to happen. He has to have some sort of money that he's raised himself to work with us. And that's not where it's going. It's been going based on, what can a trust do? Can you give me the land? And can the CPC give me money? And again, it's breaking my heart that we can't actually sit here and say, yep, we found something. But this isn't the route.
I have nothing to add to that. I agree.
Board have a problem with me communicating with Jeffrey this conversation? All set?
Fine.
All set? Thank you. All right. Update from our planner, Paul Halke Otis, Director of Planning and Community Development, on future zoning amendments. Good evening, Paul. You can stand or sit, whatever you'd rather do.
I'll sit. Good evening.
Good evening.
Thanks for having me in. I'd like to discuss with you the schedule going forward for the annual town meeting and try to establish a couple of goals for what we want to do in terms of amendments to the zoning bylaw this year. As you know, I started mid-December, and that's usually about when the, the schedule gets going, to schedule out the dates of public hearings, have conversations with the planning board about priorities, things that they'd like to see fixed or clarified. And so we're a little bit late this year because of my arrival, but I understand that we have a couple of priorities that need to be taken care of, and I wanted to get some confirmation from the Board of Selectmen and the town administrator that these are the priorities you'd like me to focus on. As you know, every few years FEMA decides that it's time to make some changes to the floodplain zoning regulations in the member communities of the National Flood Insurance Program. And I've been involved with doing this, I don't know, four or five times over, over the years. We met with the, the county floodplain administrator, and she advised me that she had a draft of a regulation that we need to get in place as soon as possible. We're kind of running behind schedule on that in terms of when FEMA wanted to see their member communities adopt this. So Shannon Holst from the Cape Extension Service provided us with like a working draft. I've taken that and I'm taking a look at what we need to do to make that fit into our zoning, checking cross-references and things like that. So that would be the first zoning amendment that I'm going to recommend that we tackle for the May annual town meeting.
Thank you. Questions from the board? Larry?
No, I wish you luck on that because I always get a little confused because we don't define the flood zones, do we? It's whoever, what government agency decides how high the water is going to come. And then what you're looking at is how our zoning can mesh with the defined flood zones? Is that what happens?
Yeah, FEMA does the floodplain maps, and they have historically not been very good maps. And.
So we have an input into that, what FEMA does on defining the flood zones themselves? The flood?
They usually issue draft maps and they accept public comments on the draft maps. And in the not-too-distant past, they rolled out some new maps, I know, on the South Shore, and those didn't go over too well. And that triggered a lengthy appeal process that a lot of the communities on the South Shore were engaged in appealing. So they issue those maps and, and their maps are right unless you prove that they're wrong. And that's kind of their process.
And then our obligation, if we still choose, then would be to hire someone to map the zoning? And so we'd have to build some budget expense to go forward if we wish, if we contemplate challenging their maps? Is that what you're saying?
Yes. Coastal geologists, geomorphologists, coastal engineers, other kind of experts that would have to get engaged with that. But for this update, we're not talking about adopting new maps. We're talking about the floodplain zoning section of the zoning bylaw, where they are saying that we need to make certain changes, not extensive changes, but they gave us the language and, and there's a little room to tinker with that language. But if you can't really change the intent of what the regulation is that they're communicating to their communities that you have to adopt. So Shannon did a draft, and that's going to really help me get, get it up and running. But what, what we need to do, and this has always been this way, under state law to change the zoning code, we're required to hold a public hearing. And we have about five weeks from when we decide we're going to hold a public hearing on that day to getting there. It has to be advertised in the paper for two weeks. There needs to be a third week of waiting time. And then after four weeks, you can hold your public hearing. So and, and looking ahead, it's time to start doing that because we, we really want to have a warrant article that goes in the warrant be exactly what we want the voters to act on and not have to make changes to the warrant article at town meeting. So the, the real deadline is when the warrant is going to press. We want to have that all done and, and all set so that we don't have to confuse the voters with changes on the floor of town meeting.
Michael threw you one last question. Does, does it link at all to our building codes?
Does it link with what?
With our building codes. In other words, if you have a first story on a flood zone, you have, you know.
It, it, you could say that it links, it meshes, the two are not supposed to overlap. And for example, years ago when I worked on a telecommunications bylaw, when cell phone network was just getting established, the bylaw that I wrote for the town of Orleans regulating monopoles and telecommunications towers, I put in there that they had to withstand category five hurricane-force wind. And a year later, I had that attorney tell me that that was not legal because the, the structure is regulated in the building code and it's not supposed to be regulated by zoning. I didn't really feel too bad about that because I thought it was a good idea to do that so that our phones would work after a hurricane. But yeah, it, they mesh together, but they're not supposed to overlap.
Don?
No, I have nothing to say.
Mary?
I gather from your comments that you believe these changes, proposed changes are reasonable? You, you wouldn't see need to fight them?
I haven't really analyzed them that closely yet. As you know, this isn't optional. If the town doesn't adopt these zoning requirements from FEMA, the town could be removed from the member community list and the town residents that need flood insurance would have to go to the open market to buy it. So this is always an uncomfortable situation where, you know, the residents don't have much say in this. And it's, it's in a rare kind of case that the federal government reaches down to the local level and tells you what your zoning has to say. And there's not many things that that happens with, but this is one of them.
Thank you.
Joe, anything you'd like to add?
None on this particular matter, but I do want to say that Mr. Halke Otis was able to turn around on very short timeframe to get, I think, an excellent memo and a discussion tonight on all of these topics. So I do want to put that out there at the outset that I appreciate his efforts thus, thus far.
Consensus of the board to have them go forward with this and get it on the town meeting?
Absolutely.
Or town meeting warrant?
We only have a choice.
Yes. So that's a yes four ways, and Julie, I'm sure, supports this. She sent me some notes tonight, but nothing really to read on this one.
All right. Thank you.
On this next one, which one's the next one? The solar? Solar. Mary, do you want to open this as to what the original request was? There was an awful lot mentioned in the motion, and I don't want to drown in that at town meeting. It was more related to, go ahead.
Yeah. You're, you're probably familiar, familiar with it at this point, Paul, but there's a solar application on the corner of Lower County Road in Ship Haven, right by Allen Harbor Yacht Club. And it's one of those, it's not roof-mounted, it's a standalone, a solar wall. Solar tracker is what they call it. And it turns and twists. And the neighbors were just appalled for several reasons. And as it turned out in talking to Joe and some of the department heads, we had nothing, there was, there was no way to fight it. There was nothing to prevent it from happening. So two individuals, Marina and I think his name is John Selby, brought this forward. They said even though they're stuck with it in their neighborhood, they would like us to have some sort of regulation that, not that we would deny them all, but they would have to come under some review to see that it was an appropriate location for such an installation. So that's what drove it.
Okay.
Go ahead, Paul.
Well, I think it's important at the outset to say that we need to try to encourage renewable energy sources. And the state provides some protections to the facilities generating solar, solar power so that the town can't prohibit them, and I, I don't think anybody wants to do that. But what we can do is reasonably regulate them and make sure that where they're located, not in a front yard that's going to be obtrusive and, and out of scale with the neighborhood, but where they can be and the size that, of the type of installation that's fitting for the, for the setting. When I looked at the existing zoning code, what I found was a bylaw that seemed to only focus on large, commercial-scale solar. So it only regulates installations of 250 kilowatts or larger. There were no provisions, nothing that addressed solar on the roof of, of buildings, whether they're commercial or residential. I didn't see anything that related to what we're seeing being built now where a canopy is built over a commercial parking lot and they're putting the panels on the roof of the, to, to utilize that land area of the parking lot to generate energy and protect the cars from the elements. There was nothing, you know, that would, would allow something like that. And so I think that, that our bylaw is kind of lacking in covering the full range of types of solar installations that are out there. And that it would be a good idea for the town to adopt some regulations that regulated more than just the commercial size. It was at least 10 or 15 years ago when solar started to become more popular. When I was working in the town of Marshfield, when I approached the, the job of, it's time to put some solar regulations in the bylaw, I thought about, well, where do you see these things? And what are the applications? There's residential where a homeowner might want to try to save some money on their electric bill or their hot water bill, and they want to put, put something on the roof of their home. There's also solar that is ground-mounted, that could go in, in, in the right place that's buffered in somebody's backyard. Then there's the commercial application where over a parking lot or on the roof of a commercial building, solar panels have been, have been, for a long time, been installed to help offset electrical costs of that business. We don't have regulations for that. So there are various types of commercial applications that we need to regulate. And then there's the big-scale solar farm. And I don't think we're going to, we actually have someone that's approaching us about one of those fairly recently. And there's one that was permitted by the planning board, I think, a year or so ago. But the big solar farms, I'm, I'm thinking that we're not going to see that many here because of the value of the real estate. The, the real estate's worth a lot of money, and I don't think that that's going to generate as much revenue that would make that an attractive option for someone. But we do have a regulation authority in place for those big-scale, large-scale commercial that would sell power back to the grid. So what I would propose is that I take a look at what's out there. A couple of hours ago, by accident, I came across something from the city of Beverly that I think you might have provided to the former planner. And that will get me off to a good start. I'm also going to go back to see how the bylaw that I wrote in Marshfield worked out, whether it had been used and whether they had seen any problems with it. I'll take a look at what work I did back then, and, and we'll put together a bylaw if the board thinks it's important. I really think that we need to encourage solar energy, but carefully regulate it so it fits into the community.
Thank you. Mary?
One, one other point, because you mentioned commercial a couple of times. The other concern the Selbes have, and I'm, I'm a huge fan of solar, have them on my roof. Their concern is this individual already had solar on his roof, and it's a fairly small house. And they believe, and, and I don't know this to be true or not to be true, that they were doing this to then sell the excess either back to the light company or to other people. So their argument was, isn't that in fact a commercial application if you do that at your residence? So I don't know if you want to stick your nose into that part of it, too.
Yeah, I don't know that we want to go down that road. It's my understanding, there, there are all kinds of agreements with the companies that do the solar installations. Some are rented and some are leased and some are outright purchased. But when you hit a certain point where you're not utilizing the amount of power that's generated, it gets sold back to the grid. So I think that's like standard operating procedure for these types of agreements. But I've never read one of these agreements. I'm not an expert on them, but I understand that's how it works. So I also want to be clear that if somebody has, this individual has this up and it, it was lawfully permitted by the town, if we adopt some zoning in May to regulate solar facilities, that will in effect be grandfathered. It won't be retroactive to impact that particular property.
And they understand that.
Okay.
They're, they're very, they're not happy, but they're very comfortable that they understand that.
Yeah, I needed to get that out there because most people don't understand the intricacies of zoning, that what's on the ground is usually protected. And once those regulations are enacted moving forward, they go into place.
Thank you.
Thank you. Don? Larry?
I'm good. Thank you.
Realistic to have something before a town meeting?
Yeah, I, I think that, that I can cut and paste from some other towns and put it together.
Thank you. And then last was related to. And then last was related to ADUs and zoning related to affordable housing.
Yes, no, I know that affordable housing is a big issue in the town, in the region. When I say the region, off Cape and all of eastern Massachusetts is in the midst of this housing crisis that various communities have tried to tackle and the state has tried to, has enacted new regulations a couple of years ago that affect affordable housing. From what I understand, there's a lot of work going on across the Cape in different towns where the planners there are working on various measures to try to promote affordable housing. This is a complicated area of planning law. I've been involved with writing inclusionary zoning, which means when a project comes along, whether it's a 20-lot subdivision, the regulation says that X number of units have to be affordable. And oftentimes, there is a provision where the developer can buy out. So instead of actually producing that affordable unit on the ground, they could write a check for the amount that it would cost to produce it and that money could go to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund to be used to create affordable units at a later time. Inclusionary zoning has been out there for a long time and so I was kind of surprised to see that the town didn't have anything like that right now. And that's something that we can insert into the bylaw to affect various types of residential development. But that's something that will take some time to put together. These other bylaws, regulations that we've been learning about from other resort communities across the country are really interesting, but I think still a little bit in the experimental phase. I need to do some research on what's been done. I saw a workshop at the American Planning Association Conference last year where we're talking to some planners out west in the Tahoe area about what they were doing to basically write a check to a property owner who would agree to only rent their property out for an annual rental, not a seasonal. Something like that, we'd have to, we'd have to go in with our eyes open and move cautiously. A lot of folks in town do generate revenue renting out their property. We need to balance whatever we would be trying to do with the interests of those property owners that use this as a means of revenue. And so getting public input and feedback will be very important going forward. Because this is a complicated subject matter, and I just got here, I'm not comfortable at this point in time committing to being able to put together a bylaw that would address one of these areas. But we will certainly be able to start working on it after we're done with the May town meeting. And I can reach out to the other planners in the area, find out what they're doing and see if there are some approaches that we could take a page from their playbook to use going forward.
Thank you. Larry?
Thank you, Paul. On this topic, nice discussion. I guess my, not concerned, but issue is, is that it's so broad and obviously you can't do it by town meeting, but I would like to have you sort through this and list out the different categories of things you're talking about so we can start those discussions, even if we're not taking something to town meeting. Zoning always is a difficult discussion topic. So the sooner we can start that, even if it's one piece, like the, you know, the rounds of apartments in people's houses or more dense areas where it's possible or inclusionary, take those apart for me, if you will, or for us. And let's get a plan where we get those discussions going, even if we may be a year away from actually taking it to the public.
I met Brianna Nickerson, our new housing advocate, and she and I are going to start to work on some things together. We've been trying to get on the agenda of the Housing Committee so that we can meet them and find out what they've been up to. And so we have some volunteer committees that we need to work with and we'll start that discussion with them and find out what they've done so far and come up with a strategy going forward and also work with the Housing Trust.
Thank you, Paul.
Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This I will comment on. Several things. First of all, if you want to go back into your archives, I was on the planning board when we worked in the late 90s on an inclusionary bylaw. It got torched at town meeting. I can't understand why it never got brought back, but everybody was talking about how unworkable it was. Additionally, I don't really see the merit of, we had that on sidewalks, too, where we created a fund where you could buy your way out of a restriction with blood money, if you will. It doesn't work. You don't wind up with the kind of significant mass that you want to do. If you want an inclusionary bylaw, put out an inclusionary bylaw and you're obligated to build a range of one and a half million dollar homes, it has to come with two homes that are affordable. At least that's my feeling. And I really feel that success breeds success. We already have an accessory dwelling unit bylaw, we passed that. That is a success. That has to somehow be joined in a nexus with a mechanism so that we can talk to people about buying down things. If you have this and you do this, we'll help you by giving you that. That discussion has not happened. So, and the general discussion about buying down a house to make it reasonable hasn't happened either. So I'm like, I'd be really interested in at least picking a couple of things that are doable, like fast, and start doing them.
It takes a willing property owner and, you know, to match it with the town.
I get it, but you can't live in a cash-counting machine. The money doesn't matter. You have to wind up with a roof over your head at the end of the endeavor and we're not doing that.
Yep, understood.
Mary?
Yeah, you put this all in perspective for me when you reminded me you got here in December. Because I read your memo earlier today and I thought, ooh, why can't we do something for housing? But you've kind of explained that level of complexity. I guess I'd go back to Larry's comment. I would like kind of a list of the things you maybe think we could do for next year. And I get it that we're, how many days till town meeting, Joe?
Ninety-nine.
Ninety-nine. So I do get it that that's out of reach, but I certainly think you've got a good list for starters here and thank you.
Yeah, I'll speak for Julie Kavanaugh, selectwoman Kavanaugh. She unfortunately couldn't make it tonight. But one thing that this board has talked about and that I think we could make progress with, and so does Julie at this town meeting, is changing a little bit of our accessory dwelling use bylaw. So we seem to be getting hung up on size of the lot, you know, 40,000 square feet. And I've had several people approach me and they've wanted to do something, but they've fallen in at the 38,000 mark. And it would seem to me it would be a very easy change and something that, I don't want to make your schedule for you, but if we just looked at what we've already passed on accessory dwelling units and why it's not working, I would think that we could make some headway at this town meeting to try and change the lot size or at least propose something to town meeting to help. There's a lot of people in this community that are trying to either move in-laws in or workforce housing. I think this is an area where we can actually talk about workforce housing. And longer-term rentals. And they want to do it and they're positioned to do it, but they're being told they can't do it. Is there any thought to us being able to do something instead of nothing at this town meeting?
The accessory dwelling unit bylaw is very reasonable and I think, I won't say it's liberal, but it's less restrictive than most communities and you can tell that the town really is trying to open more of these up. We could make, you know, if what you're describing is just a minor change, to change some of the threshold requirements, like the minimum lot size, that's just a number. We'd have to have a conversation about what would fit right. But if it's something that minor, I could put together an article and we could take a shot at it. The other things that we need to talk about is, I've received a call from a guy that said, well, I'd like to put one in my garage for my seasonable employees, but the 900-square-foot maximum, his garage, the space would have been bigger than that. And so maybe we could just build in some flexibility there and not maybe necessarily change the 900, but to maybe give the planning board the authority to be flexible there on a case-by-case basis. And then maybe we could see some more of these come along. But let me take a look at that and see if we can put together some minor tweaks to the existing accessory dwelling unit bylaw and, you know, without having a lot of conversations about it, but just see if we can make some adjustments that will help facilitate more of them.
Thank you. And as long as I have it by Thursday's at noon, I'm willing to put it on the agenda every week until we actually get something done to help facilitate getting it done.
All right, I'll take a look at that.
Mr. Wastek?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Two items. First is to invite our planner, Mr. Hal Keiotis, to the Harwich Housing Huddle on February 1st. You took away some of my thunder, Mr. Chairman. I think the ADU is great, but on acre, it's not working for a lot of people. And I know you're new to the community, I would ask you to take a drive down to what they call the campground section of Harwich, down along the water, where you have minimal-sized lots, five, six, seven, eight, nine thousand square-foot lots with two and three thousand square-foot homes sitting on them. If that can be done there, very easily, someone with 15,000 square feet, 10,000 square feet of lot area could put an ADU. Because if you come to the Harwich Housing Huddle, you'll hear the terms of generational housing more and more, and the ADU is a great solution to that, not at an acre. And I think that's something that could and frankly should be on the town meeting in 99 days with an adjustment to the ADU bylaw. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wastek.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the public? Town administrator? Anything on that?
Nope, thank you.
Larry?
No, not on this. I'm looking at John Ketchum and he's not up for some time. I wonder if we might?
Move him up on the agenda?
Yeah.
I bet we could do that.
Sometimes I take pity on people.
Don, go ahead.
Can I just give one postscript to Paul here? We had, we went through different phases in zoning for years. I mean, if you go back long enough, you'll understand what we were doing and how we were trying to do it. We didn't have zoning in east Harwich before the 70s. There was cluster subdivision period. So, I mean, I go to refinance my house, I don't have 40,000 square foot nominal acre lot. I have a four-fifths, I mean, I have a five-eighths acre. I mean, all of those houses are precluded by this bylaw because you don't actually have the property. It's a cluster of green space behind it and you're not eligible to do anything with it, even though you have an acre around you.
Yeah.
So just bear in mind that there's a, there are a number of self-inflicted wounds here that you need to be able to correct.
So I understand where the clusters, the lot sizes are smaller and that precludes that they can't even take a shot at one of these because of that.
Exactly, and there's a lot of them.
All right.
Mary?
Somewhere I went to a meeting talking about housing and the ADU specifically and they suggested that instead of square footage or lot size, that they concentrate on number of bedrooms, you know, as long as it stays within the septic number of allowed bedrooms.
All set?
Yep.
Thank you. Paul, thank you for coming tonight and thank you for the memo.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Have a good evening.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, before our Director of Planning and Community Development leaves?
Go ahead.
I do think it's worth noting, as he's written in his memorandum, so the topics that he's indicated that he's going to move forward on require public hearing. And so, Paul, I know you have the date, but what would the time be? When does the planning board meet, on February 28th?
I haven't said, I haven't written a public hearing notice because I needed to get through tonight.
Are you still trending towards that date, though?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, if I, we have a planning board meeting tomorrow night and this is on the agenda for discussion. Want to confirm with them that this is what they want to do and then I can lock in the hearing date. I'll let you know when it is.
Okay, great, thank you.
And we can announce it at upcoming meetings?
Yep, absolutely.
Thank you, Paul.
Because I know our town clerk will be looking at that date, you know, for successful completion to go to the Attorney General's office.
Excellent. Per Larry's request, I'm going to move item H up next, discussion on proposed requests for Board of Select an approval of a disclosure form submitted by John Ketchum, member of Community Preservation Committee. It's very self-explanatory in the packet, but Mr. Ketchum sits on the CPC committee. An application's been filed for a project that he abuts and he has filled out all the necessary paperwork and he's asking us to approve it and he will abstain from any discussion on said topic. Discussion from the board or a motion? And I'll start with Mary.
I just had a question. I think I understood, but the last paragraph confused me because it said, "In addition, I would like to continue to work on future actions in addressing the health of Skin Equit, if that's how you say it, Pond." So I didn't understand, you're not going to do some part about the pond, but you want to still be involved with part of the pond and I couldn't quite make sense of that.
Good evening.
Good evening, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Larry, for your indulgence. So...
Just state your name for the record.
Excuse me, my name is John Ketchum. I live on Skin Equit Pond.
Thank you.
I am a member of the Community Preservation Committee. I'm also newly chairman of the Conservation Commission. Just putting that all out there. So what I was referring to there, I'm stating that I will not participate in any discussion or voting on the matter before the Community Preservation Committee, which is an application for funding to apply alum to Skin Equit Pond to address longstanding issues with utrification there. And I'm just stating that I will not participate in any discussion or voting there. I'm requesting your agreement that I can continue to participate in all the other matters before the Community Preservation Committee this year.
Unrelated to Skin Equit?
Unrelated to Skin Equit Pond.
Right, now I think Mary's question, John, goes directly to other actions you may want to be involved in on Skin Equit Pond.
Right, the last paragraph in your letter.
Right, okay, so I just wanted to stay clearly that background. And so, other actions on Skin Equit Pond is my involvement, I belong to, I am a member of a 501(c)(3) or (c)(3), I never remember which way it goes, called the Watershed Association of South Harwich, AKA Wash, who has looked after and spent quite a bit of money on trying to deal with utrification problems. I have been involved in various things, including the retention of Ken Wagner by Wash to study the pond and come up with recommendations. I have expected that I would continue to be involved in the future in those activities in various ways. And in discussing the situation with the Ethics, the Massachusetts Ethics Commission, they suggested that I should just make it clear and get your agreement that that's fine.
All set?
Yep, just one follow-up. So now I understand that last paragraph is talking about future actions regarding the health of the pond unrelated to CPC.
Unrelated to CPC, but possibly involving the town.
Right, right.
Since the town has responsibility for the pond.
Right, no, that clears it for me. Thank you very much.
Questions, comments, Larry?
No, I appreciate, John, you called the Ethics Department in the state.
I did, yes.
And got in following the procedures they outlined, that if there's any possibility of conflict, where our job is to oversee that and make a decision, which I think we're doing tonight. And, you know, part of the issue that John's addressing outside of Mary, what you raised, is because there's a finite amount of money, funds in the CPC, because he saves all these discussions, that influence discussions and other unrelated projects, and it will not, is what John's saying, so I'm fine with it.
Don?
No, I'm fine with it.
The only comment I would make is to abstain, you need to get out from behind the table and you're really supposed to leave the room and not be part of it at all.
Understood.
Can I get a motion?
Mr. Chairman, if I could.
Go ahead.
When this matter was brought to the attention of the Administration Department and the town clerk's office, our town clerk sought guidance from council. And the reason for that is, once this matter is adjudicated by this body, it gets filed with the clerk's office. Were anyone to complain about the ethics of the individual in question, they would have to first seek the information on file with the clerk and then work with the State Ethics Office. In reaching out to council, council has recommended a more specific language that we got today for next week. So my... So my recommendation would be, the discussion you had tonight does not need to be repeated, and you can rely upon it, but that we should notice it next week with a specific language by council, which further protects Mr. Ketchum and what he's trying to do, so that there's no technicalities related to this. That's point number one. Point number two, if you look in the packet, what you would then be doing is the determination by appointing official. So the board is the appointing authority, as you know, you would be directing the chair presumably to fill it out. But on the last page there, under comment, the board could make a statement as to their expectations of the conduct of Mr. Ketchum relative to those matters. And then last but not least, not to be a wordsmith, but there's a difference between abstaining and recusal, and the process that you identified, Mr. Chairman, is recusal, and from my professional opinion, that's the better step to take. Abstaining simply means you might remain, and you still impact quorum and everything else. Recusal, it is as though the person disappeared from the meeting.
Thank you. You have no problem with us voting this next week?
No problem, just a question.
Go ahead.
Are, are you saying that what council was recommending is a change in the language in what I wrote in that form?
Not at all, and if I could, what lang, what council's recommending is that the agenda item language specifically state, review and take action on general laws, Chapter two sixty-eight A, Section nineteen disclosure form, John Ketchum, Community Preservation Committee.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See you next week. You don't have to come next week if you don't want.
Oh, I'd love to come.
We'll put you at the top, we'll put you at the top of the agenda. Okay, going back up to C, vote to hold the first reading per Board of Selectmen policy on policy development, to amend the Board of Selectmen policy on remote participation. In your packet tonight, you have the latest draft with the subtractions we talked about last week and additions. And I'd like to, next week, have the first reading, and the following board meeting have the second reading, so we can vote on this. Questions or comments or a motion from the board, Mary?
I don't have any questions.
Don?
It, it all seems very reasonable, I don't know why we do a motion, because we got to go through the readings anyway, but this looks fine.
Okay, Larry?
Yeah, it's, it's where we're going, my comment is, is that, do we need the five reasons in it?
Just speak for myself, I don't see a reason, because it seems to all be covered in there. Why not have a reason, instead of making it an open policy?
Well, I'm asking a question, I don't have an answer for that. Because it seems like it's redundant, you know, we make a decision to do it, military service and all this. I mean, I agree with you, Michael, it's, it's very broad, it's, it's so broad that I'm saying.
Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I appreciate what Larry's saying, except that five, for instance, is a real important one, it doesn't say that it was, that it was something I couldn't avoid, it's like, if you're not here, you're not here, but I've made this comment about one of the members of the trust for a while, it's like, I would hate to see them, by that, kicked off because they're not here right now. If you've got something to add to a conversation, it shouldn't be like, well, you're in week four now, so tough.
Mary?
I don't have a strong feeling either way, I'd, I'd say it's not harmful, leave it there.
Yeah, I have a strong feeling, I'm just thinking, maybe I have household grandkids, I can't make it, but I can do it by Zoom at home.
Then you're out.
But I'm geographically present, and I'm not, I'm okay with it, it's, it's very broad.
That's an emergency, it's right here.
Okay, so consensus of the board then, rather than vote to hold the first reading next week, Monday night, Board of Selectmen's meeting?
That's fine.
You have that, Joe?
I do, and Mr. Chairman, if I could just add, perhaps for the benefit of everybody for next week, in your packet you have a document that shows the remote, the procedure for remote, procedure for remote participation that it currently exists. However, staff has worked with Member Anderson, and there are strike-throughs. So the strike-throughs are being suggested on the current policy, and then second page is the procedure as proposed, and you'll see that there are highlights that replace the strike-through. So both documents should be taken in concert with the understanding that what's being read the first time is the document that's labeled proposed.
Everyone comfortable with that?
Yeah.
Yep, the second one.
Correct.
Yep.
Yep, thank you, Joe. Anyone in the public wish to talk about the policy on the policy? Thank you. Motion on D, please.
Uh, let's see, I move that we vote to approve a twenty twenty-three, Class two and Class four auto license renewal for Bassel Brothers Incorporated doing business as United Gas, five seventy Route twenty-eight.
Second.
Moved in second, and any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, four zero. All right, next up, vote to approve a Hall of Fame late submission for Charles A. Hall nominated by Leonard Calback to the Harwich Hall of Fame. Charles A. Hall served in the United States Marine Corps, World War II, nineteen forty-two to nineteen forty-six. He was appointed acting fire chief for Harwich nineteen forty-seven to nineteen fifty-two, and he was subsequently appointed fire chief in nineteen fifty-two until he retired in nineteen seventy-nine. Questions, comments from the board, Larry?
No, I, it, it looks great, I'm just amazed, he was fire chief for a long time.
Yeah.
He's just a, he gets my vote, if nothing but the length of service.
Especially with the salary back then.
Exactly, exactly.
Don?
Yeah, I think, from my recollection, this, this time period would coincide with when we started rolling ambulances as part of the fire department, so, I mean, he's, he's obviously had a char, quite the character kind of background. And this is always what, I'm, I'm concerned when I hear, late, it didn't get in, I mean, the whole point of the Harwich Hall of Fame was to, I mean, Leo and I did that together originally, is to recognize the characters who made the town the way it is today. It wasn't set up so that there was a date that you didn't meet, it's too bad, we're not going to appoint anybody. I thi, I think this qualifies, and I think it would be great.
Thank you. Mary?
Likewise, it certainly reads that he's very qualified, and I was just a little surprised we hadn't done it before now, but now's good.
There's a bunch out there.
Mr. Waystack?
Mr. Chairman, just pardon my ignorance, is there a deadline for the Hall of Fame?
Board of Selectmen policy is November.
Okay.
And that's Don, what I was only going to comment to, and that's why late ended up on the agenda. We do have a policy that probably should be reviewed based on what Selectman Howell said, but.
And the reason I bring that up, Mr. Chairman, there are two in the pipeline that are, I won't get into the names tonight, that should be brought forward, and with your indulgence, if I can put one on the next agenda, because there are two very prominent people in this community who should be installed in that Hall of Fame.
I'm absolutely fine with you submitting, and the board will approve or not.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, and it's probably a policy we should look at revising.
Yep.
Can I get a motion? Or anyone else in the audience want to speak? All set? Can I get a motion?
I move that we approve the nomination form to place Charles A. Hall in the Harwich Hall of Fame.
Second.
Moved in second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, four zero. Update, Selectman Howell, on the Cape and Island Water Protection, as promised, I'll bring this back at least once a month.
Good, thank you.
And the annual report for everybody is in the packet, it's quite an interesting report, go ahead.
Yes and no. You folks, except for Mary, have all received the preceding two other annual reports, and I've had people calling me, talking about how, wow, Harwich didn't get any money at all out of this, and that is not at all true. Actually, we got our money so early that it's not reflected there. I'll pass it along for you guys. But the good news is, and I hate flinging around initials. We had to have, and Larry knows all this stuff, we had to have a comprehensive wastewater management plan approval done by the state in order for you to get us qualified for anything. Then there's something called the State Revolving Fund for Sewering. When you have an actual project, there has to be an intended use document. And, not to confuse anybody, this is, this is as simple as this, the whole point of this board always was for the rentals is to try to distribute equitably around the Cape, everything that we needed. I checked with Aaron Perry today, which is where I got all these other reports, and we are set to get five point something million dollars, and we have already received two point seven million dollars in two disbursements. The confusion happens because our treasurer's office isn't going to necessarily recognize that. What they do, i, it's kind of like some friend of yours buying, paying off your credit card, if you're in that shape, they don't want to give you the money to go off. Not to impugn the town's reputation, but the bottom line here is, we have a certain amount that we owe that's qualified, you know, that we've already borrowed. And when they look at this thing, we submit proposals, and Joe has done that, I've, I've given the information to do that in the past. When that gets certified, they don't come in with a giant cardboard check to Town Hall and say, here's your money. They buy down the note that you have with the State Revolving Fund. We have received two point seven million dollars in two different disbursements, and we're categorized to receive a total of five point something is eligible for reimbursement. I mean, that isn't why I had to ask you to put the thing on here, because there's a second component, but if everybody wants to discuss this first, I'm perfectly happy to.
Any comments on what Don has already said, Larry?
No, I appreciate that, because I and the rest of the world, at least, my will is to find us Harwich tonight. I'm sure it looked at that and said, what happened? You know, no money, so, and that did come. I guess I'm, I always appreciate how the government can take a simple process, make it as complicated as possible. And to run that to the state and not through the town, it still, it still ends up the same dollar value. But as, as we all know, we do track our, the debt, because we're, you know, one of our goals has always been to try to have a flat debt curve going forward. And that makes it a little more complicated to be sure we, that gets in our books correctly and is, and is updated, so we can keep track of our debts while going forward, as we consider other projects. But thank you, Don, for that, that's a good, glad we gained money.
Mary?
No questions, thanks, Don, and it's nice to know we're not spending money, I guess is how we could say it.
Go ahead, Don.
But that leads me to the second subject, and I've alluded to this, and that's why it's so critically important. I was one of the five members that are bylaws in Regulations Committee. And I fought real hard to make sure that everybody all around the Cape got their fair share, and it wasn't just going to be saying, I hate to say this in public, but I will, Barnstable and Falmouth, for instance, because they feel like we've spent a whole lot of money and we deserve everything coming back first. Fought that battle, and won that battle, so that everybody gets something on a rotating basis. And you may hear in the future that the fund is underwater, metaphorically speaking, and realistically speaking. But frankly, people keep coming here and renting rooms, and that fund's going to get built up again, it was, we didn't want them hanging on to a balance because it's not helping anybody if it's just sitting in an account somewhere in Barnstable. However, Larry, thankfully, because I had a problem getting to a meeting, they had tried to make a run at the Management Board, which was absolutely set up by legislation to represent every single town across the Cape. Everyone had a seat at the table, it didn't, it wasn't like Brewster got a third of a vote because Barnstable got two votes. Everybody got the same vote, and it was a management board. They had lately started getting involved with meetings where they had an executive committee of five people that we did not necessarily all say we're going to be in perpetuity running everything. And any meeting that we're having on the, the Clean Waters Management Board, which was at all fifteen towns, has been relegated to quarterly Zoom meetings, and you've heard me say that I was kind of dissatisfied with that trajectory. The last meeting they tried, and Larry thankfully carried the water for me on that, I'd certainly sent emails about it. They tried to float a proposal to eliminate the bylaw and Regulations Committee and fold that into the Executive Committee, making it even more powerful, because that's where everything would go through. And not necessarily with everybody, members of the Management Board knowing about it. So I'm very strong about, we all get a seat, we all get represented, and we all get a fair share, and that's what my trajectory has always been with these folks. It's not that we're arguing, but they keep wanting to make it easier, which I don't know is a code for less complex, as much as it is, we can do what we want to. So that's why I wanted this on the agenda, because I want to make everybody aware that that was what was going on, and I, and we're still where we were. They tabled it, it's not, it didn't happen, and Larry knows, because he spoke to the issue, that they knew exactly where I was coming from.
Thank you, Don, questions, Mary?
No.
Larry?
Yeah, thank you, Michael and Don, for your effort on that, and the reports are interesting to me, and I, I want to just make a comment because it kind of, in the context of the new DEP regulations. Because even though, if you read the report, you know, we're generating about sixty million dollars a year, and twenty percent of that, or twenty-five percent of that can subsidize those projects over a million dollars, which basically all the projects. That leaves a lot of funding that is out, that we don't have to do, the, if the new regulations go through. And we have to keep that in mind, that, that is, it's a help, but it's not going to solve our problem. And we did have a chance, I digress, Michael, I may just a second, we did have a chance at the MMA meeting to make some points with the new Lieutenant Governor about our dilemma on, on how expensive that was, and if they could help speak in our behalf, because we have other needs, we have policy, we have education, we have a lot of things going on, and this was a single purpose subject. We'll see where that goes, a Representative Peak did offer to try to get together some participants to maybe discuss that with DEP. The feeling was that there wasn't a lot of input into, into that, into those new regulations. And so we'll see where that goes, I, but it does, it does concern me. I do have one outside of that sort of general comment. Don, can you help me, is there any discussion on the, the role of this fund in, in helping our households connect to the sewer? You know, one time we were talking about using SRF funds to bring that to zero percent, and then that kind of went away from us, is that back on the table, or?
Actually, I got, and I made the motion, I got the Management Board to go on record as saying that it needed to be replenished, because the argument we'd been making all along is, yeah, you got Title V monies there, but this is a lot more money for a lot more people that they don't have. They'd go insolvent if they, if everybody went to them for a loan to put a hookup in. They did put some ARPA money towards that at the county level, because Dan and I had talked about it, it's completely unworkable that you wind up with a nut that's, I don't know, maybe as much as fifteen thousand dollars, that's not what a septic loan was set up for. And they, and they didn't have the money to do that, because it's supposed to revolve out, you pay me back, I should lend out to him, he pays you back, lend out to Mary. That's the way it's supposed to work, but the pool was too small, so, yeah, they did put some ARPA money into it. I don't know what the magnitude is, but they claim that it's sufficient to be able to cover the whole Cape.
Mary, anything further?
Um, no, just to, the discussion Larry had about Sarah Peak putting a, a group of locals together to, to work with the Lieutenant Governor. Couple of us suggested that Dan, or Dan Bellatier ought to be on that committee, and he, he seemed willing.
My only comment really is on the revenue slides, it's pretty impressive, the fund, what it, what the income to date is on that fund, and how strategic they are about what they're allowing to come out of it, so that the fund always remains a good investment and, and a high yield investment by the looks of it.
And one more thing?
Go ahead.
Just, just so everybody understands, sometimes these things fly over your head, what Larry was saying is absolutely true, but I'm going to put a number to it. Where we're at with DEP is literally, they're recommending we triple the number of houses that are going to be seored, and half the time that we're going to be allowed to do it in. And I mean, if things were to stay constant now, which I don't believe, if everybody has to do that, asphalt, pipe, all kinds of things, you're going to go insane. If we're at three hundred and some, three hundred and fifty million dollars right now?
Minimum.
You're talking over a billion dollars in over twenty years instead of over forty years. Unless they bring a big wheelbarrow full of money with that regulation, I don't know how we do it.
It's another unfunded state mandate, and I hope that this board, when it comes time, will vote to fight DEP and not just roll over and say we're going to do it in twenty years, because we are making progress, we continue to make progress. Our voters are approving our projects, and we are moving forward, so. And a little pressure on the state senator, that, our state senator, that doesn't see. And the little pressure on the state senator, that our state senator, that doesn't seem to be supporting the fact that we can't pay for this, would be warranted by all the voters. Item G, early childhood education, was one that Julie had put on. With no objections, I'd like to bring this back next week when Julie is here.
Sure.
If anyone in the public is here to talk about it tonight, I would welcome any comments. Okay, with that, we'll bring that one back next week, and we did get additional information. Joe, I'd like to add to the packet next week, the Human Services Grant information, the amount of money we put into that every year. Because I think that, for me at least, that's someplace that this is appropriate to draw from for early childhood. But that conversation I'd like to have next week.
Relative to early education?
Yeah, same topic, I'd like to add that information, so that whatever we come up with, they could apply to that. We're constantly trying to find people to apply for that and doling out the money. Why not give it to our youth? H, we took care of, contracts. I would just take motions to start on A, B, and C.
Mr. Chair, I move that we vote to authorize the chair to execute the fiscal year 2022, 2023 Regional Community Development Block Grant, also known as the CDBG grant, for housing rehabilitation and childcare subsidies.
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, four zero.
You want to do it, or?
Go ahead.
Mr. Chair, I move that we vote to approve a contract with Bartlett Consolidated LLC not to exceed the amount of $421,259.78 for the supply and installation of guardrails as outlined in the scope of work.
I second, but I would ask Joe, just some explanation on that. Guardrails, to me, is kind of a broad subject, is it?
Certainly, through you, Mr. Chairman.
Not long.
Go ahead.
The very short answer is that that dollar amount is going to be matched 100% from the state's aptly-named RAP program. And RAP stands for Winter Recovery Assistance Program. So there's a number of things that cities and towns can rely upon for that funding. And so our guardrails get damaged quite a bit during snow removal. So this is an allowable expense, and we can use that funding completely for this contract.
Okay, so basically now you're just looking around for those guardrails that need help, and you'll be replacing them.
Sorry, I couldn't hear that whole thing.
Any list of guardrails that will be replaced?
Well, I'll need a list. The process is, you're going to be looking at guardrails, replacing those as money comes in.
Correct.
Anything, Don? Mary?
All set.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, four zero. Last one.
Mr. Chair, I move that we vote to approve a contract with RAD Corporation, Doing Businesses, RAD Sports, in the amount of $78,601 for the replacement of fencing at Brooks Park.
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, four zero. Town Administrator's Report?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before I get to the content that was included in my Administrator's Report, I first want to do, give a report out, so to speak, from the 44th Annual, although that does not mean consecutive, Business Meeting of the Mass Municipal Association and Trade Show. I, for one, found it, as I often do, to be energizing. I find that when I can surround myself by other government geeks, I learn a lot and get energized moving forward. And this year, I think many of us shared the feeling that because we hadn't done it in three years, it was long overdue, but I, for one, took tremendous satisfaction out of attending and learned quite a bit that I can certainly dial down to a much deeper level if the board would like going forward. And then, secondly, I want to speak quickly, but more in-depth going forward. What you have in your materials, TA correspondence, should be the latest version of what's known as our Sources and Uses Table, and specifically for me, a document that I rely tremendously upon to see the forecast numbers for any fiscal year as I build the operating budget in concert in partnership with the department heads. And so this document was put in there because I, once I received it, and you can see the date stamp, is a few hours after I had received this document from the Finance Director. So what I just want to put out there is just some preliminary thoughts and cautions. And that would be, first, that what this document has served in years past is to give all of us as decision-makers an understanding of what is the actual budget. So we still use the word budget for fiscal year '23 in this case, because even though we're preparing for '24, we are in the midst of not only collecting some of these funds that are sources, but also expending some of these. So we know that this is a snapshot in time of what we're, we were expecting to have happen in the current year. And then we use that to model a forecast based from a number of different sources. So you can see with total sources presently, that there's an increase right now in the forecast of 3.1% year-over-year, and the total source is there. And that's made up of tax levy limit, which, as we know, is real estate and personal property. And that amount has gone up by 2.9%, which specifically is 2.5% and new growth. You can see that the work that the Finance Director is doing, and she's not done, because we will have policy discussions on this document, on local receipts, that we're anticipating at present, for the forecast, a 4.2% increase in local receipts. You can also see that we have an expectation of an increase in cherry sheet. And for those of us that have participated in MMA, we heard the governor indicate that she will not be submitting her budget until March 1st. And so that will be the first time that we'll be able to validate that number. And while that number does not have a tremendous impact on the forecast, I would draw your attention to line number 11, where we would want to know what charges we are faced on that, because as you know, we net-net lose money from state aid. So really, as you look at it, and what I was hoping is to actually remove line 15 and remove line 29. So line 29 remains, and what it is arithmetic, is the difference between the total sources and the total uses that are listed there, but of course, there's a major hole there, and that's intentional. The major hole there is line number 15, which is the town operating budget, which, as you know, I'm working with department heads on. And I will be presenting both my comprehensive budget, which will encompass the entire 70-something million dollars that we expect to spend in fiscal year '24, including the operating budget, as well as my budget message that ties with that. And that will be presented to the board no later than February 6th. Now, as you recall, your obligation under the charter is I have to get you a budget before February 14th. Again, I'm tracking to give you that budget on February 6th. You, the board, must, according to the charter, with or without amendment, return, or, excuse me, deliver that budget, either mine or yours, so to speak, if it's amended, to the Finance Committee within two weeks after receipt of it. And the Finance Committee has until March 31st to make their recommendations on the budget, but also the articles, more on the articles later. But I also want to put out there that we're striving for that event on Saturday, March 4th, whereby we will spend the whole day with the Board of Selectmen, meeting jointly and equally with the Finance Committee. So you're really going to have about a month's time to do a deep dive on all of the numbers that are provided on February 6th, so that we have a more, what I'm hoping is a more robust discussion than in years past on that Saturday budget hearing. It's my understanding that the Finance Committee intends to meet their obligation of a public hearing on Thursday, March 9th. So we are endeavoring to all of that. The last point I want to make on the document in front of you is, I am not, and I cannot emphasize that enough, I am not plugging in that $31.5 million number into the operating budget. Were we to do that, we're looking at a 6% increase year-over-year in the operating budget, and I would expect that that would be dead on arrival, which is why I wouldn't do something of that nature. To me, that's an absolute ceiling that's available, and I will communicate that directly with the department heads as I refine my budget message.
Thank you, Joe. Questions, Mary?
No.
Larry?
Done.
Don? Thank you for presenting that, Joe.
It's great.
I think what I took away from that is we are ahead of schedule, and we will continue to be ahead of schedule based on the charter requirements.
Well, if I could, in a moment of candor, I will say that we're ahead of schedule with the charter, but we're behind schedule on what I was hoping to do this month. Nonetheless, we are ahead of where the charter requires us, and we're going to still be able to leverage those key dates for broad and in-depth discussions.
Thank you.
But thank you for that.
Anything else on Town Administrator's Report?
I do, unfortunately, I have one more update based on what we were talking about last week with the Judah Eldredge public hearing. We were not able to complete the notice for the hearing, so the dates have to be pushed out. But the problem that we're running into now is the question of value, or, you know, value or appraisal of the property. As you know, town meeting appropriated $369,000 back in 2018 under Article 55. But as you may also know, there was an expectation back then that the town was going to pursue, and I want to be clear on this, LAND, it is the word, but it's an actual acronym. It was a grant program that the state offered that is related to projects such as this. We, in administration, have found no record that the town ever pursued that. So the only funds that we have available would be whatever is left over of the $369,000. But we know some of those funds were used in preparation of this. So we're still working with council. It may be that I come back to you folks and see if we want to do an appropriation at town meeting or take any other actions. But it is fair to say what was presented to the town in May of 2018 did not exist much after that timeframe.
Joe put this on the agenda for next week?
Very good.
So that we can have that conversation in depth. I know it was brought up to get a second appraisal, and I believe it was you that said that we don't have to have a second appraisal, we could rely on the property cards. And I'd be interested to see what the value on the property cards is, based on this is a piece of land that's an absolute mess.
$701,690 as of December of 2022.
That's the value of the property card?
That's the list on the property card.
All right, next week, thank you.
Yep, we'll do, thank you. That concludes my report.
Selectman's Report, Mary?
No, just I'd echo what Joe said, the MMA conference was quite good. And just to talk to other people from other towns, get some ideas, and a couple of good things that involve just some nice little index cards that I'm going to pursue on housing. It was Salem that did a, the cards were about that big, and on one side were the questions they were getting from the public about, we can't do this because our schools can't handle, all the, all the not-in-my-backyard stuff. And then on the back were all the facts and statistics to refute that. So I want to get their cards and steal where I can.
Thank you, Don.
I'm going to echo what Mary and Joe said. There's a great value to going there. You find out a lot of stuff, whether it's in workshops or talking to people in between workshops, and some of which I had the pleasure of sharing with some of my colleagues, because we were, a number of us were sitting there in the housing meeting, and some of which I did on my own, and which I expect everybody else did. It's a terrific way, and it's absolutely right. It just shows how bad the situation was for several years when they didn't have it, and they had these webinars of sorts, because it's just not the same. It just isn't. I found out more in between the meetings, and I'm sure everybody else did, too.
Larry?
Yes, it was a, it's always good to find out we're not alone in our troubles.
Our misery.
And when we whine, we all whine together.
And then we have some whine.
And zoning, big discussions. I did want to bring up one topic, though. It's interesting, we had a discussion, and one of the legal discussions was on the, what could the town, what kind of flags they could fly? Because you can fly a government flag, but you can't fly a public one. And it went different directions on policies and on bylaws. I don't think most towns have a policy on what flag they, what type of flag they can buy, can fly, rather. Boston now has a policy. But we had a presentation, a panel on this subject, which actually was more interesting. I didn't care that much about what they were talking about, flags, by the way. But nevertheless, the discussion turned policy versus bylaws. And bylaws, they like better, because it encouraged and actually mandated public input, which policy does not always do that. One of the women on the panel on the flag discussion was reviews of bylaws when we submitted to the state, when we passed something at town meeting. I was a little surprised, there's only three women that do that. I thought it'd be a larger group that reviewed the bylaws to come in. But then her discussion on bylaws, and I bring this back, I always, I hate to go back to previous things I brought up, especially those I lost, but I want to bring it up because this is interesting to me. Sometime in the past, we talked about when we have a private petition. In some years past, we'd asked a lawyer, our town council, to look at those petitions, not to change their meaning, but because we'd seen, at least in my time, we had some petitions went to town meeting, private petitions, that if passed, could not, we could not follow through there, written so poorly, that was, just wasted everyone's time. And based on that, then we instituted a, I know it was a policy, but we asked our town council to look at those, just be sure that they were, they met their objective. The woman on this panel discussion made the comment that she saw bylaws come in from towns, that some towns took a very complete hands-off approach. Some towns took a middle ground approach, in which they offered help, as we were doing before. And other towns took a very on-hands approach, and actually helped them write the private petition. And so I am where I was, I think, last year or even before. I still think there's a benefit for us to look at private petitions, just for sure we don't waste everyone's time. And her remarks left me some encouragement that, at least from their perspective, that's where they see them coming in.
Thank you, Larry. Some we can certainly bring back. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
We don't need a snipper, do we?
No.
Perfect.
Hope it turns to rain.